The September 2025 Facilities and Finance Committee Work Session. To some young people in the room, maybe who are here for a class perhaps, and thank you for choosing us. Finance and facilities is always the interesting meetings. Yeah. So we have first up, public comment.
No one.
No one names. Todd, just starting. All right. So we can move past two, one, and then there's no response. So two, two, we're on to item three point one. Tricia, thank you for the careful minutes.
You're welcome.
Karen, did you have any?
Accurate. Everything looks good.
As always, thank you.
Oh, God. Any comments on the minutes?
Nope. Okay. Minutes are approved. So we move on to section four, consideration of accounts. Emily.
Be down here. Hello. Dominic, we want me to take this.
Sure.
If I could just ask you folks to introduce yourself and maybe for those people who might be observing for the first time, maybe just a sentence or two explanation about what you're going to be going through.
Okay. I, my name is Emily Shipe, and I am the Assistant Business Executive for the school district. And each meeting, we provide something called the consideration of accounts. It reviews the treasure report, Eddie. What I'll be going through is surplus property that we have to have board approve for us to get rid of old things and things that we aren't using anymore. And tonight, we're actually approving the tax warrant because our tax collection season is coming up. And we also do things like approve donations coming into the district and how those donations are going to be appropriated into our budget. So every meeting, I will be here to review these types of things. This is a fairly small agenda tonight. So, and I'll have Lori introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Lori Mudge. I'm the district treasurer of the school. And I will usually come to the finance meetings to go over the treasures report for everyone. It basically just states the beginning and ending balances of the month that shows the receipts and the dispersments throughout the month for each account.
Good evening. I'm the Assistant Superintendent Dominic Lacy. Excuse me, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. Normally I would be discussing important topics like the budget and so on, but this evening I'm here in support of this fantastic team.
And still important topics.
It's still very important topics. Of course. Absolutely.
So to move on to the consideration accounts, and normally Lori would speak about this, but I can tell you from sitting in her position for many, many years. July is really an uneventful month, as is August. And as we start into September, then you will start seeing our state aid. And then in October, our tax collection starts. So July and August, we are really just going through the months of and very minimal collections of revenues and really expending in getting down to the bottom of the barrel and most of our account balances until we start that new revenue in the new, in the new school year. So there's really not too much, unless you have anything you want to add, Lori.
Not too much. As July shows, there's not much activity going on.
We are in the, currently finishing up our audit for the 2425. It's not quite finished yet, and that'll be finishing up in the next couple of weeks. So that's really how we spend our time over the summer is closing one year, starting the next and preparing for our audit and going through that process. So the other, the next thing is surplus property. Again, when we have antiquated equipment, unrepairable equipment, you will see this type of resolution. And in this particular case, it is a refrigerator. We also will be doing buses during the year and things like that, but this one is just an old refrigerator. I believe it is at the Boynton Cafeteria. Jen? No, it's at the high school? Oh, it's in Enfield. Okay. So that is the one thing that I made a mistake on here. I was assuming it was in the main kitchen, but it is an an old refrigerator that is irreparable, inefficient, and it's, it's more costly to repair it than it is to just replace it at this point. We have the tax warrant. So Tompkins County prints our tax bills for us. So at this time of the year, we are giving permission, the board gives permission for us to collect the taxes. And in doing so, we have to set a tax rate, and that is based on our assessed value of all our property. This actually changed after I had originally put the chart on the original agenda. I think Tricia updated it today. The tax rate did drop a little bit with the changes. It was some additional assessments in some of the taxable values in some of the municipalities. So right now we are at a 15.129299 per thousand for the Tompkins County. And then that equates to the same using the equalization rates for Candor and Richford. Tompkins County Finance, our assessment office is still in the process of reviewing. We're quite confident this is where they are going to be at. I was trying to get a solid figure, but they have had people out of their office and they do all the printing for us. This is fairly solid. There is a possibility, a very slight possibility, this rate might be tweaked a little bit before the board sees it, but I'm pretty confident this is, this is solid. It would only be Richford and Candor, and that's not going to be that much.
Number again was.
Pardon me?
Number again was.
For, per thousand for the Tompkins County municipalities is 15.129299 per thousand of assessed value.
And what is it currently?
Oh, you'd have to ask me that. I think it was six, I think it was still, no, it went up. So I'm thinking it was, you know what? I'm going to have to look it up, Todd.
Yeah.
I got too many. I got the new numbers in me. I thought I actually had it written on this thing here in front of me, but I don't. Let me look that up and get back to you and let you know what that is so the public can know what that is. Then we also have some money that has come in, revenue come in from the IPEI. They support a lot of what we do in the district. There are small grants that the teachers apply for, and this is just appropriating these funds into the budget. For a total, the IPI grants are a total of $4,401.64. And then we also received an $840 donation for our community closet at the high school. So that is all I have for this. And if you give me a few moments, I will look up that tax rate from last year.
Thank you.
I put it out of my head because we're in a new year. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Well, just out of curiosity, why Candor and Richford are higher?
They're high, the rate comes out higher, but their equalization values, so their property is, Tompkins County properties are assessed at 100%. Whereas Candor and Richford are assessed at 61.5% and 70% of their assessed value. It's called a state equalization rate. So even though their rate is higher, if they were assessed at 100%, then their rate would be exactly what the rate is that I referenced for Tompkins County. But because their equalization rate and it's a state, it's, it's the area that they live in and how they assess the properties in those particular municipalities. So they're just not assessed at 100%. But they're still paying the same.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank IPEI. Karen, I always enjoy doing that. Thank you.
Yeah, IPEI, I think a public education initiative, always in support of our teachers and students in the various programs that we do, as well as donations come through IPE, IPE to the school district, which we're truly appreciative of.
Anything else? Is no one wanting more details on the refrigerator?
Well, just that, as a result of the start of the audit, even those of us on the board who were here as of June 30th, 2025, we received notice about the audit as well as to make sure that we verify or confirm that no fraudulent activity has passed through us as board members. And also, the audit goes through everyone.
And we'll have those results soon.
Yeah, we should. Well, October 21st, I think is our next one. We're going to still have that for, for that meeting. Also, just really quickly, we're in the process of final, not finalizing, but the, the first part of the review of the RFP for our banking services. We anticipate seeing those this Thursday. So we'll start to share that information as it becomes available.
Well, I think we are ready to leave the four dot something items behind and move on to five. So the first item is strategic approaches to capital project. Dan, I think Dr. Brown has some comments. So we've got Dr. Bryman, Dr. Brown, Chris.
You've welcomed me back.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll start. Greetings.
Start with introductions?
Yes. Greetings. I continue to serve as superintendent. My name is Lou Bell Brown, and I'm joined by friends.
Dan Bryman, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
I'm Christopher Glauwitz. I work with Tetra Tech Architects and Engineers as an architect, and I lead our project teams.
Welcome. Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, and we and others have been enjoying our owner, architect, construction manager, OACM meetings for the last several years, and most recently, the last year or so, the conversations have been intense around a potential capital project that we were hoping to put in front of our board first and then in front of the community to, for the deferred maintenance and ongoing challenges that we have with a couple billion dollars worth of assets. So at our most recent meeting, we were, we continued the conversations about timeline. And I and members of my team continued to reiterate the aggressive nature of the timeline, and we also noted a couple of things. One, some staffing challenges that we're having right now. We, as you know, we've had some transitions in the superintendent's office and other offices, and what we've learned over the years has always been the case is putting on an election or any type of a vote with this community, with the many sites we have, takes a significant amount of attention and labor. And some of the staffing challenges that we've had in the past have been highlighted, highlighted how hard that could be. And so we've been struggling with how we could do that in December. That coupled with, we met with our communications team and we sort of backwards mapped what we did the last time we went out for a couple of projects and the, the number of community conversations that we conducted, surveys, public meetings and forums. We were struggling to figure out how we could fit all of those in between now. Noting that the board hasn't ultimately decided on the actual scope of the project between whenever that could be, it could be as early as September 30th or in October, to do that within a matter of three to four weeks would be tough and a challenge for us. So that brought us some pause as well. And then, you know, Dr. Bryman, Dr. Lacy and I, we've been in many conversations with folks from Cornell University and the group that is working with this RFP that we're immersed in right now, and we're learning a lot. And we are looking forward to bringing the results and the, what we've learned from that RFP to you and the community. And we're looking at a timeline in December, November, December. I'm looking at Dr. Lacy, but it's going to be November, December. We know that was going to inform this project. All that to say, our last OACM meeting, we brought those challenges to the group and we thought it may be good to start here in committee and then go to the entire board about timeline. And I know Chris has some, what we have talked about as far as the aggressive approach to what it would look like in December. And we have some proposed timelines that would look like us having this conversation or vote in May. So just putting it here tonight as the first conversation with hopes and a recommendation that we bring to the entire board. And not necessarily a recommendation from me, but I am asking y'all to help me think through this. And if you're like me and you're struggling with how we're going to do all this before December, then I would be at that point recommending that we push this out until May. But Chris, do you want to put those up? Would I just share it in?
Sure.
Why, why are you doing that? Just for, for people who might be attending their first facilities and finance meetings, say the RFPs request for proposal. And it is Cornell University has agreed to help us understand the demographics of this district 10, 20 years out because we need to know how many children will be living where in order to plan appropriately.
I tried my best not to use an acronym, and you caught one. Thank you. Checking me.
Thanks. So what we're seeing now is the schedule that we have been talking about with a public vote date on December 9th and sort of working backwards. And you can see, you know, that vertical red line is kind of where we are in time right now and that short green bar that is, you know, from now until December 9th, just being a couple of months. So there's a lot that would need to happen in that timeframe. And so on the next slide, we'll see, we'll see a longer green bar. So look for that sort of down near the bottom. So just put this up for, you know, to set a baseline for what we've been, been talking about for a little while. And now we have a different suggestion, which recognizes the demographic study review that Dr. Brown just mentioned, you know, receiving in that November, December timeframe and you know, wanting to incorporate a little bit of time to digest that and make sure that we're moving forward with that information. Then we'll see this Board of Education adoption of the Seeker and Proposition Resolutions, Seeker being the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is a New York State requirement. Those documents are ready to go from your legal team, but this gives us an opportunity, you know, to reconsider that if, you know, if we need to. There is a requirement that, that those are adopted 45 days before the vote. Then we move to the green bar, which is communications to voters. And you can see that that gives us a much more time to set up a communication strategy that will allow the district to communicate in all the various ways Dr. Brown laid out and more potentially, you know, following on the communications that were done ahead of the 2019 vote and the 2024 vote. We have, you know, a lot of strategies that, that we vetted at our disposal there. So this gives us time to, to do all that and leading to, you know, May 19th, which is the third Tuesday in May, which folks may know is the New York State determined date that all school districts vote on their budgets. And so many school districts align capital project votes with that, with that date as well, although there is no, you know, actual requirement to do that. Then at the very bottom, I, you know, I, I put in a, a project schedule. So I wanted to be sure that we could still get work done starting in 2027. And not, you know, if, if we're moving to the May date that reduces the time for us to, you know, being a little selfish here, the time for us to design a project and, and, you know, get it to bid and get it to construction. When we're, you know, taking six months out of that. And I think I just wanted to kind of present that as a proof of concept that there is a project we could conceive of to maintain that schedule. So we wouldn't be looking at another year of cost escalation. So that's a little bit in the weeds. But those are a couple of different ideas about how to approach this.
Thoughts, question for us?
So I, I believe that the decision for us tonight is if we should make a recommendation to the full board as to the revised schedule. Is there discussion on that?
I agree. I don't think it's possible. We don't have enough time to, to get something out by December. It's not possible. So I'm in full support of making a recommendation to push it back to May to give us enough time to, I think, you know, have that RP come out as well as, you know, do more due diligence for, for something that I think is, you know, more well thought out and has, we could also get community input from. So I think we have done enough of that as well. So.
All right. And I'm looking at the schedule with the communication to voters that we didn't even start communicating. And although knowing that we wouldn't start communicating until the board had voted on it anyway. So I appreciate shifting the timeline along. And I have here the Climate Action Plan, the draft that our Climate Action Team of educators came to us back in May, the proposal, which we had stated that we would include like a committee or ad hoc committee to discuss this. And at, I recall at one of the OACM meetings, Todd had brought out some points in this Climate Action Plan that that we had stated in, in our capital project, and there might be some things that need more look into and which Dan needed to be in discussion around that. So I am in agreement with moving it. I know with the RFP coming out the end of November, the results of the RFP for the request for proposal for the enrollment demographics throughout, looking at our facilities throughout the school district. And that's due the end of November, early December, that it would be a challenging turnaround for this. Yeah. So I, I'm in favor of the shift.
Okay. So I think we have consensus that this committee will recommend to the full board that we follow the revised timeline.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Yes. Up next, item five, two. Thank you. Campus construction updates.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you so much.
When you're ready, I'll just ask the same. If you could introduce yourself and just say a sentence or two about what it is that we do with these updates for people who are new and take it away.
Certainly. Thank you. Travis Randall, I work for Campus Construction Management Group, and we're manage the active construction phases of the work that's going on under, currently under the 2019 Capitol referendum project. So thank you, Tricia. So again, we have a number of phases. I'm going to skip through some of the kind of previous phases that are basically in closeout. There's not much change month to month on these projects, just because they are in their, their kind of last little bits of, of completion. So phase two, I'll skip. Enfield Water, basically done. It's in a paperwork process. Three B two is the upcoming project. Tentatively bidding that October. Most likely looking at October 21st for a bid date for that. For three B two, like to get letters of recommendation to the board by Friday. It's Friday, October, I think, 28th, 26th, board, I believe there's a voting meeting. October. Is it 30th? 28th to 28th. So I might be a couple of days off on my dates there. So looking for a fairly short turnaround from a letter of recommendation to the board after we, we there's a process, we open bids, receive public bids, open, read them. Campus and Tetra Tech, we do a post-bid review where we vet the contractor, ensure they're qualified and that we're, both parties are comfortable accepting the bid, then we write the letter of recommendation to the board. Just kind of a little bit of a deeper dive in, into that. I'll reach out to, to the board with, with some more information on that very soon because that date's coming up, out of month.
So question, Travis, we were going out to bid early October or late September? Because how much timeframe are we given for the bid for it to be in the newspapers and publicized and all of that?
Yeah. Goes what we call kind of on the street. Out to prospective bidders. To be honest with you, we already, we pre-reach out and we start, we start procuring bid interest. Campus is already in that process for several months now. Notifying contractors that there's going to be a project, general scope. We can't share the documents yet. But working on bid procurement, that goes to the street. September. Let me, is it 16th? I want to say, I have to look. I'm, I'm not sure right off the top of my head, but yep, notice the newspaper gets put out to several plan rooms where contractors typically will get the bids, you know, will get the contract documents rather and work on putting their bids together. So that would give them, you know, a good time, approximately a month to get their bids ready, to prepare their bids. Yep. Let's see. So so moving on, just a couple of quick photo, photos there of the Enfield Domestic Water System on the left. The, the old system on the right, the new system. Much cleaner system. The older one was obviously quite out, quite outdated, very old. So there's that. So three B one, that's our primary active phase of construction. So at BJM, the only work that's remaining there is work on reinstalling some blinds that have, that have come loose. So we noted that deficiency. We're working on that. Boynton Middle School Kitchen is complete. Except for a few punch list items left to complete there. The work is complete, kitchen's in use. Enfield, we did a, a lot of exterior abatement and interior abatement. That's all complete. Exterior facade work is ongoing. And then jumping to the high school, the parking lot near the Teachers Association Building behind, behind Area A. Some new paving there, curb sidewalk, paving, striping, signage. We have structural steer, steel is nearing completion at both additions. There's ceilings going in, temp partitions were compete, completed. Rebar for the, one of the additions for the concrete slab is also nearing completion. We've also started installing exterior CMU block wall assemblies for the physics addition. And the new, in the boiler room, new air handler unit, HU is installed and running, just working on some minor minor finishes on that. That serves the kitchen cafeteria, as noted. High school area G and H, all the HVAC equipment has been installed. There's a little bit of minor work for ceilings and chases to conceal some of the piping, whatnot, still going on there. And I think that wraps up three B one. Any questions on three B one? Or in any of the phases?
At, at Beverly J. Martin Elementary School, the reinstallation of the blinds are the blinds in their library?
No, though, it's, it's the classroom. It's the classroom. Yeah, the classroom kind of roller shades. The library, different substrate, a different attachment method. So no issues with those ones. We've had some issues that we're working with the principal with. There's several of the shades have came loose with use. These are manually operated with the strings and whatnot. So we just want to make sure that they're not, they're going to be robustly, you know, attached for the, you know, for the life of the shade.
When's the completion date?
We should have them all down within a few weeks. We're doing it off hours for several hours each evening. I would say within a few weeks, then we're going to turn around and begin reattaching them, which will also take a couple of weeks to get them back up after they're all back down. It's, it's each classroom. So we're, we're doing, we're doing them all.
We're doing them all to check in every one of them, not necessarily that there's reinstallation for every classroom.
Every classroom is getting reinstalled. Yeah, just as a, just out of an abundance of caution, we're going to remove them all, reattach each one.
And this is all under whatever warranty or anything like that, because when one, I would assume that there would be some sort of quality control checks put in place once the blinds were installed.
That's exactly right. This is, this is no added cost. This is the That's exactly right. This is, this is no added cost. This is the quality control check that happened and, you know, weren't happy with the install. So the contractors reinstalling, yeah, every room as a precaution, just to ensure that that we have a quality install on those. Thank you. Yep. So just a couple of photos. Structural steel at the additions. The new H U, this photo is several weeks old, but gives a general idea of the size of that air handler unit that was installed in the boiler room. Comes in multiple sections. The paving behind Area A to high school. And that's it.
Questions? Comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that leads us to five three. Other discussion items? Are there such items?
Well, the Climate Action Plan proposal to do is our next step to bring it to the board with a motion to get an advisory committee, not a, not a committee, advisory council or ad hoc.
I do not know. We can find out. What does happen?
I will put that on my task list to investigate.
So as well.
I think there was like some talk that we were going to have some conversations with some of the people that were making some of the proposals that were on that committee. Maybe as the school year went on. I thought maybe that was the next step.
No, I I think the next step was to include Dan and some other people into that conversation to like a ad hoc.
Okay. Well, that's a perfect segue into six one. I'm going to assign the following action item to myself and Karen to answer that question.
Okay.
Which leads us to seven one, agenda setting for the next meeting.
Therefore, if we, if, after talking with Dan and everything, if we pass this at the September thirtieth board meeting, then we could invite, I don't know if we would invite the Climate Action Team back or we we could put it on the agenda for next month.
We could. And we should.
Or have some initial discussion with.
We should, right?
Yes.
Shall is mandatory and then we should, conditional on
Right.
getting the answers we need. Anything else? Which brings us to eight point one, the close of the public meeting.
Wow.
Thank you. We're at thirty three minutes.
Nice.
That was easy. That was fast. It's faster than it's.
Efficient.